And we'll call the meeting to order at 6:03. And we will start with public input. So Amber, would you like?
So I just have a question about the Sparks class.
Oh, can you?
Sorry.
So we can hear you on.
Okay. I just have a question about the Sparks class. I emailed Chris and Suzie and we spoke about it over the phone. But I just want to know where it came from. I've spoken to other elementary schools and it's not in other elementary schools. I want to know who decided to put it in our curriculum? Why it's replacing a core class like social studies and science? Why they have three specials as fifth graders when they're going into CMS? And they're going to be in like crazy classes. They're just so behind that I think a third special added is insane. Like, I would love to know, because I know for Ties class, which was two years ago. So when they go into CMS, they have flex, which is like their special, where they get to pick a fun class. And the majority of Newfields kids who go in have to get tutoring in either math or reading during that flex class because they fail the assessment. So I know for Ties class, it was three kids from Newfields did not fail. I'd love to know what this class going in was. And I just feel like they're playing the name game. They've been together since kindergarten in Spark class to get to know each other better. Like Chase could probably tell you every kid in his class's middle name, their siblings' names, their parents' names, how many pets they have. They're playing knee tag. And just things that I don't think should take the place of education. So I don't know who initiated it. Like, where did it come from? How did it get in the curriculum? How come the parents have no idea it's there? Like, not one parent knows. This, like, social studies and science got taken out and feelings class got put in. So like, where did it come from? Are you guys allowed to answer me or no?
Spark.
Jack, you decide how you want.
I was gonna say, I actually, I never knew it was called Sparks class. I kind of have an idea when he said feelings class. So I'd kind of be curious too where that came from and what came about because I think it's before me.
So I mean, we can definitely, Suzie can give an input of guidance, why our guidance counselor is in our classrooms working with students in regards to social emotional well-being for all of our students, which was something that we pushed in all of our schools. But I'll let Suzie talk about the Sparks class, the name, what she does and the, kind of the routine that she follows. CMS part, I can't answer for you because that's new information to me. So I would have to look at that. If that is a question that you'd want this board.
Yeah, I'd like to know how many kids from Newfields.
Because that would be more of a question that I'd have to work with the cooperative school district and get that information. Since it's not one of the buildings I directly supervise.
So Sparks came from a coordinated effort between Mary Clemens, who was the PE teacher last year, or two years ago, and Tracy Elwood. And they did a combination class because they were doing so many similar things. So that's gone, Mary's gone, and it's no longer that Spark class. What I think you're referring to is the SEL curriculum that our counselor goes in and has chunks of time with our, with all of our classes K through five. You and I did speak about this. And I, I sat down with Tracy and said, you know, is there a way that we can alter how you deliver these services so that we're not taking any more instructional time away? She just talked to the faculty today about having time with the students during lunch bunches and delivering a lot of that content during that time. And then also going and offering an opportunity for students to come and do a lighter version of recess if they choose to be with her and have something different than recess provide that. So we did alter quite a bit after our conversation. SEL is, social emotional learning is super important right now. Because there are so many feelings and, and dysregulated individuals in the building. It is an important component of what we do. But I agree with you that we have a very limited amount of time for instruction. And I want you to know that we're even looking at our schedule for those unified arts to even consider how, how to look at lessening that so that some instructional time can come back.
So they're going to get social studies and science back on Monday?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I just, it's, there's. I read the scores were horrific. I talked to the most of the moms. And it's just like, spelling's no longer important, but now they're in two specials a day. And now this was another one. And I get it, I do care about their social emotional, but.
Of course you do.
They're going into CMS and it's going to be a shock to these kids. They lost two, like, especially the fifth grade class, lost second and third grade because of COVID. Like, huge fundamental.
I agree.
Huge fundamental years. And I just think we have to get them ready for CMS or we're failing them, like.
I agree. I will tell you this, that last school board, Dare was brought up to come in for a 10 or 12 week. I think it's 10 week chief. And that will be incorporated into that, into the fifth grade. And so that will take some time. But that's something that's been here for.
Forever.
You know. But that will take that place of what the counselor does for those 10 weeks so that we're not, again, we're not messing with any of that instructional time.
But can these classes take the place of a specials class versus English, math, social studies, science? Like, those times where they're doing specials should be where those things are incorporated, not in place of like a core education class.
That could certainly be that. There's also equity of the workload that needs to be considered between the teachers. And so that's a, that's a, that's some underground work that I can certainly look into. Amber, I want to be very, very clear that I agree with you that our instructional time is limited. I would like to ask for more time in a school day. And that will come up eventually because I, I think that it's critical that we get our Newfield students where they need to be before they head to CMS. You and I are in complete agreement with that.
Yeah, I just don't want like every month to go by and like, oh, it's changing, it's going to change. And then we're in April and we're like.
It's already changed. It was said today in faculty meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question about that? You, you just said something that sparked my interest. You said equitable teacher time. If, if Dare's coming in and potentially coming in during a special time, what do you, what do you mean by?
So if I take it from music.
Yeah.
Then that curriculum is getting less. And the art teacher, music teacher, PE teacher, science, social studies, math, all of those. Our workloads for our teachers should be as equitable as possible.
So I understand that. I guess my question is, is that, you know, we've increased the amount of music our kids are getting. We've increased the amount of art and we've increased all of the specials over the past three years. And so we've essentially decreased the.
Instructional time.
Instructional time. So what is the logic behind increasing the specials? I'm more asking a philosophical question for people who are watching. And, you know, how is that decision made versus giving more instructional time?
Well, because of our celebrations of learning, we don't feel like it's taking away from the core curriculum. Our music, art, STEAM, STEAM is a perfect example. They're doing so much of the science that normally, and they should be. S is the STEAM. Science is the S in STEAM. Engineering, so a lot of those things in our test scores show it. We went up in science. And I think that it's in direct correlation to that teacher being able to take some of that expertise that she has in STEAM and using it in that arena and taking some of the load off or, or being in conjunction with the classroom teacher, them working together. Same thing with music. Right now, in first grade, they're doing an economics unit. They're talking about, they're singing songs about music or they're singing songs about money. Adding money in songs. That, that's true collaboration. And so I don't, when, when we're doing cross-curriculum work, I think that's super valuable.
Yeah. So I think cross, cross-curriculum work, wow, that's a mouthful Suzie, is really great. I just, I, I was looking preemptively at the, at the scores and things and mine from day one at the school has always been a concern about ELA. And I mean, we're not doing vocabulary right now, we're not doing spelling, we're not. So what does that look like? Because I'm, I have parents asking and I personally have not seen anything come home. So I'm, I'm very much in a, I don't know what they're doing for that because there's no spelling books anymore. There's no vocab worksheets coming home anymore. There's no, I've been told it's Orton Gillingham, but what does that look like? What does that mean? As much as the student-led open house was great, I didn't get any of those questions answered unfortunately, so.
So one thing that I think that you're pointing out is that potentially a time of just a curriculum night where we can explain all the curriculum to any parents that are interested in doing that. I think that would be super valuable and we can certainly do that. I also think having Jen Mosher, who is really our resident expert in Orton Gillingham, should come and speak to it. Because now we have not only our teachers trained in it, but our para-professionals so that they can do some reinforcement work. I'm, I've, I'm more excited about what we are doing in spelling and writing this year than the past two years. I've seen more intentional instruction. Now, whether or not that's coming home and you're hearing that could be, could be a misfire. But what we are doing is, is strong instructional practices in those two areas.
When does that get done though? Is it the last, like, like I'd ask, it's like 15 minutes of spelling? Or is it 45 minutes of feelings class? Could be the other way around.
So.
I, I would love to see you have the kids who are prepared to spell feelings.
Actually.
I'm telling you, we're addressing it. That's, that's where we are. We've, we, I've trained, everyone's been trained. There's a ton of, a ton of intentionality behind what we're doing.
I just don't see it on the schedule. You know, I like, I like to have a schedule. I like to see where they are, what they're doing. And what they're doing in the schedule we have doesn't, it's not accurate.
Okay, so I, I think that's something that I need to go back to the classroom teachers and maybe during parent-teacher conferences. A schedule can be written out in more detail so that you can see the instructional time that's been given to that. That could, that could help.
Because that was seven hours a day, they're getting a little over two hours of core classes. From the schedule I was presented, it would have had calculated with the times on the schedule.
That's no longer accurate. And I don't even know that, I think that on one day, if you were to add up those minutes because you saw the three pullouts, that's not accurate, that's an accurate reflection of the four other days. On top of the fact that we've changed up when Ms. Elwood is with the students.
Hey Suzie, I definitely think, just for your benefit, it would probably be helpful to get as much information you can out about Orton Gilliam. I know a ton about it. I know how hard it is to get people trained. The fact that everybody's trained is crazy. It's crazy comprehensive. It involves so many different things. It's the best one around. At my school, we have three people. And I have all sorts of NDS kids who can't do any of it. So to have that kind of thing here, you're going to see huge benefits in the long run. But I definitely think you got a little bit of a PR issue. And I also think it might be helpful to get out the, the minutes. I mean, I have a hard time believing that like music is getting as much time for a child in a week as math. Like, I'm sure that's not the case, but maybe it's just a matter of getting that information out.
I agree.
Chris, are you going to let us know about the CMS? Are you going to reach out to them about the remedial?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask the questions and see if who can give me that data. I'm not sure they can pin it down that way.
I would be interested, I would definitely be interested to see those, those numbers. Because I definitely, I mean, I've, I've heard the same thing, that kids are in flex doing core work, so.
And it'd also be kind of nice, I don't know if they'll be able to do it, but like, even like, kind of like a couple of years to kind of look at, like, is it a trend? Or was it like a, you know, one bad clap? You know what I mean? Like, is it a trend?
Is it a COVID thing? Is it a thing where, what can we do at this level to, so we're not?
The only thing I would throw out though, that if they're doing it at CMS, we don't have control over that.
No, but if we know that the students are prepared.
That part I get, but I don't, their policies and stuff almost needs to be handled. If we as individuals have problems with that, need to go to their meetings to voice those.
No, no, but the concern is making sure the kids are ready when they get to CMS.
Ready so that they're not ending up.
Because they're getting remedial stuff at CMS. So we want to know like how many of our students, relation are actually getting remedial.
Yeah, like how, of the students, do we, do we really have a problem or is it just a handful? Like, do we need to? And we had talked a long time ago at one of the meetings, I remember talking about the idea of not every school, all the elementary schools being exactly the same, but being a little bit more on the same page so that there is equity where Newfields is doing it similarly to Stratum and Exeter and all the other schools. Because then when they get to CMS, they're all going to the same school. They're all going to end up feeding into CMS. So what does that look like? Like, are we, what are we doing curriculum-wise across the board to make sure that we're doing similar things, I guess? I know that's your wheelhouse, Chris, that's why I'm looking at you. And I know you said that that's kind of your goal.
So, but I think the question Amber asks is, are there a lot of kids from Newfields that are not being able to have these flex classes that they can, they can go that are an added benefit because they have to do remediation?
Yes.
So I want to, that's the question I want to investigate. Is that true? And is it scheduled? Is it, yes, they need the remediation? Or is there other factors? I can bring that back to this board.
Yeah, that would be great.
That's a question I can ask for Newfields if they have the data on it.
Yeah.
So I'd be glad to do that. Your question about curriculum Jenny, we're, we're consistent with math.
Yeah.
Because we have a math resource that's K. We don't with anything else other than next-gen science standards, which all of our schools use and we've done a lot of training with. And that's what we're trying to do with our curriculum is to say, what are the common things that we want all of our elementary schools to do when they get to middle school?
So I guess my question then, on, on those numbers, the P, the kids that are maybe getting remedial things during flex is, what is it? What, what are they getting? Are they getting math and science? Are they getting ELA? What are they getting? It's not just though.
For the.
Flex? Oh, they only offer math and English. But what I'm saying, yeah, so is it, what, what does that break down to? Because we, we have focused a lot over the last few years on math and science, which I think is wonderful. But I, you guys know, I've been the squeaky wheel for years about ELA. And that's my concern. So I just want to make sure it's not slipping through. So I guess that's my question.
Great, thank you, good questions.
All right. Other public input. All right. And we'll keep it open and continue through the agenda. So the first thing up is minutes. I did have a couple things. On page three, under principal report, the second paragraph, the second sentence, the second graders would be going to Open Center because it was before the field trip. And then under 7.1, second paragraph, second to last sentence. And Chief Young couldn't think of anything. It says thing, just needs a spelling. It's, so page three, the last full paragraph. It says, Mr. Haywood asked if there would be any cons to doing the program and Chief Young couldn't. And it says thing, it should just say think of any. Page four, the unidentified was Ms. Silvani. 8.1, first paragraph, second to last sentence. Ms. Bishop recommended discussing the system for gathering feedback from the community and making a plan. That's all I have. I don't have anything.
I'm good.
All right, then I'll make a motion to pass the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then the non-public minutes, I did not see anything.
I neither.
Nope.
All right, I'll take, make a motion to pass the non-public minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to manifests and financials.
Okay, so in your board pack, we had a current year financial and the budget. And then also on the table, I did put a pile of three manifests. Right next to, yeah, right there.
Your turn.
So we can start with the current year budget. So last time we met, I had just brought the line-by-line, didn't bring my handy-dandy worksheet. But now we have it since it is the second one and we can compare it too. So since the last time we met, we did add about $30,000 of expense. Now, most of that was encumbering an unfilled para position. That, I don't know Suzie, if you want to talk a little bit more about that position and all. But we had some additional expenses as we got the year started. At the beginning of every year, we always encumber the full special ed transportation until we know really what the student needs are. So we've been able to relieve some of that encumbrance. And that's pretty much all the changes unless anyone had any questions.
So what is the special ed para, that line?
So that is a position that we currently have unfilled, but we've encumbered with the anticipation of filling it.
Yep. Just haven't filled the position yet. So what, is this on top of what we budgeted for? That's what I'm confused. Okay.
Okay. It's just we didn't have anybody in that spot last time. But the intention is now to fill it. So if we don't have the position encumbered at the time of someone sitting in the seat, then we have to put an unfilled in. So we've identified the need for the unfilled.
So it's just a, a position we've been short the whole year, but we're going to fill. Okay, so it's a position that's always existed, it's not a new position?
It's in the budget.
Okay.
So if you look on the line, it, you'll see it's really in the budget.
Okay.
Okay, so then if there's no more questions, we can move on to the proposed fiscal year '24 budget. I will start this off saying Suzie does have the least increase out of all the principals, so congrats to Suzie. So what we did is included a line-by-line, but also a pie chart. And so the pie chart, I do break it down into different categories, so.
Thank God you can do a pie chart.
So we do have some salaries. Again, it's, the, the teacher line is budgeted, it's showing a 3.24% increase, but it, there's a salary offset, offset by one less budgeted para position. The special ed tuition is a change in student need. For, for student, we have the multi-year contract where we're in the first year of the contract right now. So it's a 2.9% increase. But then it's an overall decrease in transportation because of a change in student need for special education. The health insurance GMR was a real crusher. It came in at 15.6%. The changes in FICA and retirement, that is a function of salary. And then food service, we have increases because our food service director had increased compensation in the current year that wasn't budgeted for. So you're, you're seeing that budget to budget now, as well as if you go to the grocery store, we all see the cost of food these days. So those are the major drivers. And I don't know, is there anything else you want to add Suzie?
No, I, you know. Even though the numbers stay the same, some of the numbers stay the same. For instance, our general teaching supplies stay the same. That's actually a decrease when you think of our inflation. You know, we definitely try to stay well, well within the means on all of our lines. But that does mean that we actually are taking, you know, the inflation part will take the hit. The, the teaching supplies alone will probably be, you know, more like what would normally be $15,000 to $16,000 versus 20 of what we would actually be able to get. So we were just really conscious of all of our Newfield citizens and how everyone is feeling the crunch. And we wanted to bring in a very fiscally responsible budget to propose to you all.
Any questions about the budget? I do, I, I'm sorry, I'm just going line-by-line. So how happens you get somebody to sit on the budget committee for so long? So salaries, regular ed, instructional aides, what is that? That's a.
That's our kindergarten is the one instruct, that's the one para position that is, that isn't paid out of the special education line. All the other paras are attached to IEPs.
Every para in the school is attached to an IEP?
Should be.
Okay. So this is, so this is just a regular para sal. Okay, so that's why it's not all lumped together, okay. So did the position, did we add our? Like, it's, it's just a huge jump. So I'm, I'm just, do we have more than one? Is there two? Is there one in it? It's a big jump, that's my question.
For the teacher's salary?
No, this, right here.
Should be two, right?
62%.
Suzie, this is, um. This is.
Your special ed is down.
Did, I guess that's what I was asking, did it come out of the special ed? Like, did it shift? You know, sometimes the line items shift in where we move them. No, yes, maybe?
Yes. Two kindergartens last year, so you had two kindergarten aides.
Okay. All right.
It shifted in that line. You see the delta between the two, that line and salaries of special ed aides where it's down 20,780.
Yep, okay, that's, that's what I thought, that's what I just wanted to make sure. Okay, cool. And our, our special ed tuition, is, is that because, do we anticipate any, I guess, is that somebody dropped off? Is that our needs have dropped off? Okay.
Hey, quick question. Just, I just noticed like, you know, obviously electricity went through the roof. Oil and gas didn't increase at all?
So we got quotes from Mr. Mester.
Yep.
Electricity will go up, the gas, he prepaid. So he's confident for what we had budgeted for will cover that till that does go up. So he won't see it in his budget.
Cool.
He'll see it in the budget after that.
I vote for his raise.
Electricity will get hit in November.
Oh, yeah.
So we had a budget for that increase starting next November.
How does that?
Prepaid for oil too?
We prepaid and that covered us, yeah.
Sweet. That's huge.
And then media salaries, did that? Do we cha, yeah, that's a, I'm assuming that's like a shift or something.
Yep.
All of our unified arts are two days and that person was at two and a half.
Oh, nope.
Nope.
Library and media.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. The library, media. So we are the only school in the SAU that had a para professional in as librarian. She has her, her master's degree in library specialist. She is going back to school to get certified right now. And so we're making the shift from her being a para over to the teacher's salary where she should be.
Okay.
So based on her certification, she'll fall under the teacher's category, not the para anymore.
Okay. I know that that's what they're going to ask when the budget comes and so preemptively having those conversations. And then under computer instruction, replacement of equipment, is that, is this kind of like a cycle thing? Or are we going to see, is this maybe going to be like a one-time hit and then we're going to taper off for a couple of years or?
No. No, we need to stay at a level pretty, our Chromebooks took a pretty good beating over the pandemic.
Okay.
That being said, if there is money available at the end of the year, that would be something I would put money towards so that we can upgrade those sooner than later.
Okay.
Hey, Suzie?
Yes?
Psychologist contracted services?
Yes.
Is that just because we have more kids having, needing those services? Is that just literally what it is? 2140? It went up like $18,000. So who cares?
The school psychologist is on an SAU contract. She works in a split, her contract is split through three buildings. So that is the one-third of her salary and benefits in this line. So we get her one in.
It's not based upon need?
It is based on the needs we have with our students. It's one-third in each of those buildings. Now, if the years fluctuate, then we would bill the other school if, say, we didn't need the one in whatever half of the, that day is, we would bill that to another school. But right now, it's based on the needs for the three small schools.
Yep.
And her salary's not down in the, I'm sorry, her benefits aren't down in the benefit sections, it's all right.
It's in there, yeah. I figured it was benefit, okay.
Okeydoke.
Okay, I'm going to ask a stupid question. What are our school board expenses?
Your dues. Nope, your dues and then your stipend that you get.
Did that, that went up that much?
Your school board dues will go up every year.
Okay.
That's, that's your support through any legal that you would have.
Yep.
As a board, and then also for policies and policy review from the New Hampshire School Boards Association.
Do we have any expenses with the fact that we're like recording and everything now?
Right now, we don't because they drop off.
Yeah.
And then if they were to be here, we would have that extra cost of them staying for the entire meeting. But they're, through the SAU and Mr. Lister.
Yeah.
Flexes their days on all of the meeting days.
Okay.
We don't get an extra cost for recording.
All right, I was just preemptively saying, do we need to add more to that?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Okay.
Why has the travel increased, like doubled?
Can you tell me what line you're looking at, Jen?
Yeah, it's 11, 24, 10, 50, 58, 0.
It's up 100%.
Yeah, it's because it's doubled.
Yeah, and it's even more from two years ago.
Are you saying about 24, 10, 50, 58, 0?
Yeah, 50, 58, 0.
Yep, so that has to do with going to other schools. The travel with Global Labs and looking into those initiatives. They'll be travel based on that.
Has trash removal really gone up that much?
So.
We throw it out front.
Trash should be reduced in this budget?
It's up 105%.
No, this is the new one.
This is the new one.
The one that I gave you?
Yeah, this was.
44%.
I thought it was. Am I looking at the wrong one?
Yeah, you had to look at this one. It's okay.
We actually.
I've got too many copies apparently.
Questioned why it was so much about a month ago.
Yeah.
And I asked Molly and Suzie to look at the contract we had with Waste Management. We were not in a binding contract, so we've actually changed that. As of Monday, we will switch to a different vendor.
Okay.
Which is significantly less. It gets close to $6,000 a year compared to the $18,000 a year. So that's why you see that savings.
Okay.
And you'll see some savings with it this year. We, I believe, printed this report before.
Right.
We changed vendors.
Okay.
So you will see savings.
So it could be even less this year as well. I was like, what are they doing over there?
A lot of money and trash.
Yeah. Okay, so can you explain the food, food management again? The food management.
Sure, so we increased the food service director's salary in the current year, but it wasn't reflected in the budget for the current year. So this report does compare budget to budget, not actuals to budget. And then also, we put in an increase for the amount of food because if you can see, the actuals from 21, 22 was 27,000. And we're assuming it will go up a little bit higher than that.
So what's in the supplies? Is that just the actual food? Or is that like paper goods and all that stuff, too?
It should be all of it.
All of it? So what is our cost of, like, we're, because we're eating in the classrooms instead of in the lunchroom right now, we're using those like containers and stuff? Is, what, how does our cost compare to? Like, what are, what are our needs to be able to serve lunch in the classrooms versus in the cafeteria? And is there a cost implication there?
I'd have to ask.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that.
Because I just noticed when I was having to be here one day and I saw they had the like little containers with the food in it, and I was like, those cannot be cheap. So I was just curious if we're, if we could save some money that way. All right.
Anything else with the proposed budget?
Nope.
All right.
And then if you just want to hand the manifest back this way, if you're done signing them, that'd be fantastic.
So my question, any recommendations from the board regarding the budget? Because in December, we'll invite the Budget Advisory Committee to take a look at it so that we can have something final for y'all.
I guess my quest, I, just the food service thing. If we can maybe look at where, where we're, break, maybe break down that supply a little bit more. What's, what's actually food costs and what's supply costs? And is there, is there any chance of savings if we were to go back into the multipurpose room? Or, you know, is there, yeah, I don't know, is there a way to save some money there? And I would definitely recommend going in front of the, when you go in front of the Budget Advisory Committee, highlighting those, those, the line shifts because they looked huge. Somebody's going to be like, what? So, that's it.
Well, do you want me to answer?
Yeah, you can go first.
So after the, after, well, during the pandemic, all the students ate in the classrooms. And it turned out to be a really lovely opportunity for them to be with their classmates. It's a calm, quiet environment. A lot of times, teachers would continue talking with the students about whatever topic that they were still interested in. And we built, and were able to use that space, our gym, all through the day without doing the setup and breakdown and cleanup afterwards. Teachers unanimously said they love the students being in the classrooms. There's, it's calm and quiet, and they actually eat their food. A lot of times when it's all of them together, there's more socializing. They're certainly important to socialize, but they have an entire 30 minutes of recess to be able to do that, you know, within that grade level anyway. And the teachers have continually told me how much they like having the students in the classroom. It's also, to be quite honest, it's also, for a lot of students, it's anxiety provoking to be in a large space and to have to decide where they sit or who they're sitting next to. It's an unstructured, it can lend itself to an unstructured time. And it's eliminating that. And, you know, when all the feedback from the teachers is positive, we kept it that way.
Thanks. Moving on to committee reports, starting with policy.
Did you guys meet?
I haven't gotten anything on meetings, so I don't.
So they met?
They did. I swear to God, I did not get a single email.
You're fired.
I've emailed your SAU.
I know, I've been checking it.
Oh, really?
I swear to God, I haven't seen anything.
So I can give a quick update?
Yeah, well, you're going to have to because I don't.
So the policy committee at the SAU, you see a number of policies.
I figured they met because it's a lot.
After the board member conflict of interest, which I don't believe they reviewed at that time, so.
Oh.
I don't think there's much concern anymore. So anyways, the ones you see regarding financials and finance, what the, the policy committee is going to do this year is they're going to have themes. And they're going to look at themes of policies to bring to each meeting. So, for example, school safety policies, special ed policies, you know, curricular policies, any of those policies, so that each month you'll have a certain theme. The first one was all regarding financials. The board made no, recommended no changes because these all just needed to be reviewed because they hadn't been reviewed in a while. Besides the, the investments, which we do every single year.
Yeah, it's an hundred percent.
So the, other than any, you know, specific language, there's no recommendations for any changes for any of these policies, except for that you've reviewed them here and noted in your minutes.
Yeah, the auditors just noticed that we hadn't reviewed some in quite some time. So the auditors didn't say we need to make changes, they just need to have eyes on them.
One thing I did notice when reading through it is there's a lot of his, her, like, I think inclusive language could be used. And that was, in all of them, there was some his, hers.
Yeah, I thought that was, we talked about, as we're redoing all the policies, that's something they were going to change universally across.
I hadn't asked Tom to bring it up to the next.
Oh, right.
Policy meeting.
Hard to do, though.
Yeah.
If you don't know, there's a meeting.
It's fine. I think it's on Heather's radar, though.
So you can make a motion to accept all of the policies with the recommended language changing for neutrality. All at once, you don't have to do them separately if you're comfortable with the recommendation from the policy committee on what they have recommended.
And then there was one other thing that I noticed. On the curriculum adoption, it says new programs and courses of study shall not be, shouldn't be or? New programs or courses of study?
So that wasn't part of the policy review? That, it was just added, so you, when we talk about the DAIR program for chief, is the policy to back it up of why we had to wait?
Oh, okay. Got it.
All right.
I didn't see any.
So these are technically first readings, right?
You can have a second reading, the recommendation won't change. So if you want to push them to a second reading, you're more than welcome to do that.
But we can skip the first reading?
You can skip the first reading and go with the recommendation from the policies. There's no changes other than the general neutral language in the, in the body of the paras.
Do we have any issues doing a lump?
Hang on one sec. I don't, I don't think so, but.
Nope, I don't have a problem with it.
Nope, all good.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations with the gender neutral language. For, for all of them?
All, all. Can we do that?
You can.
Okay, good. Cool, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, safety and security.
We're awesome. We haven't met again, but I'm, is it part of your principal report? No?
It's okay, you can.
I do know, I mean, I was here while the teachers were doing an Alice drill. It was it last week, a week, a couple of weeks ago? I don't know. They looked like they were doing a fabulous job jumping out of windows. So I think everything is, has been going well as to plan. We've been having a lot of drills. Everybody's seen the communication. So I guess, Suzie, do you have any thing to add on how it's gone, or?
It was great, chief. Chief was here and Rich Kane, who's the head of security at the SAU. Not only the run-through of the drill was super beneficial, just to keep it fresh and to remember the things that you're supposed to do, but the questions around the scenarios were really rich. I think I, both chief Rich and I thought that the questions were strong and we got a lot out of it. Everything from you don't pick up a weapon, you know, you kick it away from the perpetrator to, what were some other things, chief? It was using a belt to tie the, to tie the door, they couldn't get in. We saw some things internally that we need to do some work on. We all put, you know, the badge on the, or the, goodness, I'm tired. The emergency codes on the back of our badges, so that when an emergency or if an emergency comes, we're ready. It just was a, it was a really, really great time under the circumstances of doing such a serious drill.
I do appreciate all the communication. I've gotten them all, so I do appreciate that. I think it's awesome.
Thanks.
And, yeah, you guys have done a really great job of sending home information on when teachers are practicing, when the students are practicing. I think that, I know my kids have all been talking about it in a positive way. It was great to see the chief here and, and some officers here doing some fun things, too. So I think it's been really good to have a presence with our law enforcement and fire and everybody. So I think it's been good.
Thanks.
I've got a question for you. For the emergency numbers on the badges. Is it possible to put those numbers on our, the campus school program badges as well? Because I know for girls on the run, we don't have that on there, so we would not know how to.
Yeah, that's a great thought.
Do that, so we could make that update. That would be, I know our ladies would love that.
That's great, Jane, thank you. Okay. All right. Superintendent, Superintendent Search Committee, we did our initial interview last night. We did make the recommendation to move the candidate board. So they will be having their joint board interview next Thursday in front of the board. The public is welcome to come. We'll start the meeting with public input before we move into the interview process.
What time is that?
We have to be there at 6:00.
How many internal candidates?
We only ended up with one.
So only one interim candidate? One candidate moving forward?
Yes, one candidate will move forward.
Not unexpected? So what happens if this candidate doesn't move forward?
Then we'll have to go through an alternative route.
Is that alternative route being, we have more time for that?
We'll have to do probably interim for a year and then extend the search, yeah.
Your point's a good one, but keep in mind, there is, I mean, I wasn't there because I got ticked. But these two weren't for this idea. So this has nothing to do with these guys, it has everything to do with the joint board.
I understand that.
Yeah, so.
I will.
Well, what happens?
Let you know about my displeasure along with yours, that this should have never been an internal search.
Agreed.
Yeah.
We would 100% agree with you. It went to bat hard for it.
I love Esther, I think she would be a great candidate. This should have never been an internal search.
Well, ultimately, does Esther a disservice?
It does.
Truly.
She has absolutely, well, I will digress.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a real reason for that, but she, it does do her disservice.
I think she probably beat out other candidates anyways.
100%.
But now she doesn't get the chance. So it's just kind of crazy.
It was a long debate. We tried.
Yeah.
Really hard. For three meetings in a row.
I.
I 100%.
I got you.
We had it. We tried, didn't, it didn't. Yep, I agree.
Unfortunately, there was other boards involved.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But yeah, so the joint board interview is next Thursday. And I believe it's in Julia's restaurant, right?
So.
Oh, good, I'll go to the right place.
All right, so that's my update. Communications and Community Engagement Committee, you guys haven't met yet, right?
No.
Because we're still trying to figure it out.
We're still figuring it out. Well, yeah.
All right, Suzie, principal report.
So we started off on the first page, just sharing the information I told you that I would share in the last one, which is our SAS scores and how we compare to the state. We are above all of our state comparisons. Obviously, I'm very pleased with our science score going up to 56, being the highest it's been in five years. In math, we're just one point off of our highest score, but we did make a 15% jump from. In math, we're just one point off of our highest score, but we did make a 15% jump from last year. To Jenny's point, we still need to push up our ELA, though we are higher than last year and higher than the state. So that data, as well as our other diagnostics, are showing a really strong upward trend. And I think that's in direct correlation to our, to our professional development that we take so seriously. That is the number-one way to increase student learning is to have strong instruction. So, you know, again, to Amber's point, making sure that we have that strong instruction and to have that time to do that strong instruction. We have had a lot of opportunities for our students to be empowered. Our student leadership team spoke at our all-school assembly on last Friday, as well as an MC.
The shark.
Thomas, our shark being the MC, as well as our cross-country team being recognized by Mr. Twombly. I do want to give a shout-out to Mr. Twombly. He has been, not only did he do a fantastic job with our students as represented on Friday's assembly, but he has been working for a couple of weeks now solo as we look for a new nighttime custodian. I am happy and pleased to report that we do have a nighttime custodian that will start on Monday, who has a lot of experience under his belt and seems like a fantastic individual. So we're happy to have him on board. But big shout-outs to Mr. Twombly for keeping the building so clean, because that is the spread of germs. If we don't keep our building clean, and he has been doing an excellent job. But our, back to our students, they have had so many opportunities to take a leadership role. The fifth graders, you know, there were three students who, fifth graders who wanted to be very creative during recess and wanted to build, and we really wanted to honor that. And so they took the initiative to call Seven Rivers. Seven Rivers came in three times. And it was really fantastic to see them out there building with appropriate materials and tools. And then they're going to have a bake sale to give back because Seven Rivers did that pro bono, which was very generous of them. And of course, I've talked about our student leadership team. They are busy with quotes all around the building that will go up soon, as well as a fun run that they are going to do in the spring. And they're collecting those plastic bags to do a buddy bench.
I love that thing. I think my household is going to build the buddy bench. I drop stuff off every day. It was the best thing ever.
We've collected a ton of Halloween candy that will go off to our, to our armed forces, as well as notes that will go with that. Our first graders will be the first grade to do the celebration of learning. They are singing three different songs, money, should I save or should I spend? And I can't think of the other one, but do you remember what it is?
Save.
It's fantastic. They did a store yesterday, so they're learning how to be producers, or, yep, consumers and producers. And so they produced jewelry and ornaments and keychains and reading buddies. And then the entire, the entire school came in with Newfield's real money and purchased it. They were the consumers. And I have to tell you that their peers were so kind and generous of, you know, really being excited about purchasing these bracelets that they've made. You know, you walk around and the kids are wearing each other's, the jewelry that they purchased and this, then the first graders came back and counted all the money that they had gotten. There's a lot of integration with math. They tallied how many people came in, which were 97 people. They're going to dress up as what they want to be when they get older, and that celebration is coming up very soon. So we're excited about all the work that's happening in there. Fourth and fifth grade students got to go to Portsmouth to be on the gondolo. Both times were fantastic. Fifth grade got to go because, I think I've told you this, we wanted to make sure they had the experience that they missed from last year. The crew said that it was one of the best groups to ever come through. They actually sang the gondolo song to them, which they had never had a school sing that song to them before. They came back really understanding some really amazing things about how to build lobster and crab traps, catch plankton. They learned how to, how to survive when they were at bay. It was really an interactive field trip. It was, it was fantastic for them. Second grade went to, is it Massabika? Is that where he said it? Massabika? Because they are doing their celebration of learning on forest animals. That was a fantastic time. Of course, I already said how wonderful the parade was and to have all the families come in and actually get to see a student-led assembly was fantastic. We had our math night, as well as a very, very well-attended STEAM night, which was fantastic. Our global lab representatives were here today. They went through our building and met with students and teachers and then did a presentation for us during our faculty meeting today, talking about how we can be connected to schools all over the world. Our fifth graders tomorrow are heading out over to CMS for the ropes course. This is something new that, that we've incorporated because we want to give students, our fifth-grade students, opportunities to kind of be over at CMS, give them little bite-sized pieces. They're going to meet Principal Bairstow tomorrow so that it just becomes more familiar. Drew is coming over also in the coming months to have pizza with them, as well as the assistant principals throughout the year, so that they'll have some familiar faces before they go over to CMS. Friday, we have our Veterans Day ceremony, and we're excited about that. We have about 10 veterans who are coming. Student speakers, Jackie Silvani, Silvani is speaking as a, as a vet. So, so we're excited about that. And then the following Tuesday, we have our parent-teacher conferences, and then our fourth and fifth graders are doing student-led conferences.
I love to say this, the maths and STEAM nights were fun. I remember going to the math ones with my second grader, and it was a multiplication thing, being like, oh, this is going to be fun. He doesn't know his multiplications, but the way it was set up is to actually understand it. So he was even able to do the multiplication stuff. So it was really great. Any questions for Suzy?
Do we have, so you said something about more curriculum nights. So I know we've done the STEAM and math. Or, do we have any more coming up on the calendar?
No, because we're heading into holidays.
That's fine. I figured. I just wanted to ask the question. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Alright, then we're going to move on to new business.
Wait, I have a question. What's this reading intervention on there?
I think we, I think we covered it at the beginning, but that was a question you had. You had put about reading intervention.
Yeah.
What are we doing with reading? I think Suzy answered that with the Orton-Gillingham training.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so negotiations. So we have been meeting with our professional staff to look at their contract because it's up for renewal. I think one of the biggest things that we as a board noticed and thought was kind of weird was that there was no insurance anywhere in there. So when the budget comes before the town, that's where the vast majority of that money is for, is the, just to give them some form of health insurance and dental, because they have currently no insurance in their policies, which I actually thought was kind of strange, because I would think that that would be something that would be a priority for most people. But as a board tonight, we do need to make a motion to accept the contract.
I'm making a, a motion to accept the con, the contract, para-contract?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, community relations.
With interest, what was the increase in the para-contract from last year?
The over, I don't know what the overall increase was. The number looks scarier than it actually is.
We'll have that true number in December.
Yeah.
Once we have it all. It is, it's, yeah, I don't want to misquote it, but we'll have it for December at the public meeting.
The SAU increase of 10% for Newfields plus this, you guys are going to have a hard time with polls.
This is something, I don't, I don't think this one, I think this one, because the majority of it is a big hit now, but it's not going to sustain if it's a big hit.
I mean, they did get a salary increase, which they definitely deserve.
Definitely deserve.
And then the healthcare. And so, yeah, I mean, the percentage looks like.
But that's why I say, don't look at a percentage. Look at the number. It's really not that.
Yeah, if you look at the break.
And the, the, when we looked at it, the, the increase on our actual taxes is like pennies, like pennies. So it's good for them. We keep our good paras and it's really not a huge tax burden. The rest of the stuff, that's up for debate, but this particular one, I strongly recommend supporting.
Between the optics of 10% increase from the SAU and whatever the COOP comes up with and then.
So if I'm not mistaken, the SAU increase is actually within the budget that was presented tonight.
Correct.
So it's within that 2.6 or whatever it is.
It's part of your assessment.
It's part of this.
So the 10% from, presented by Molly in the SAU meeting?
That was the overall change from our SAU budget from last year to the next year.
Which is built into each of the individual board's budgets.
Right.
Alright, so community, community relations plan. One of our goals is about trying to gather information from stakeholders and trying to engage the community a little bit more. So this is for us to have a chance to try to think of what do we want for a plan.
Jackie, can I make a recommendation?
Absolutely.
Since Chief is here and we can get him out, so he's bright-eyed tomorrow for kids coming, can we move that up in the agenda?
Sure.
Because it might take a little bit longer for that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
Sure.
So the Dare curriculum.
Do we just need to make a motion to accept?
Yeah. And that was why I included that policy. We couldn't.
Yeah.
The last meeting.
No.
We had to do it here, and there's just backup. So we do need to make a formal motion to accept Dare at the fifth grade level.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to accept Dare at the fifth grade level.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe we should have done that at the beginning, right?
I'm sorry. I just go down the list. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Alright, so back to our community relations plan. What do we want to do?
Well, we had talked about doing a survey, but one that was specific to the school, not an SAU survey, but like, specific to the school. I would, I would personally still like to do that. Maybe wait until after the holidays, though, so that it's, but we wanted to get it back before.
Well, what do you want the purpose of the survey? Do you want it to drive the bus for the next year? Do you want it to critique how the bus was driven for the year? Like, I think if we come up with that idea.
I kind of think of a little bit of both. I would say, because there's been a lot of like, SAU surveys on curriculum and everything like that, but it's nothing specific to Newfield. I think it would be good to hear how we're doing as, when it comes to communication, when it comes to our curriculum. I mean, that was the topic tonight. Feedback from parents on what they'd like to see, or, you know.
But let's back it up. So.
Yeah.
When do you want to talk about the results? And then, like, do you want to do it in May so that you have June? Because then that you're done. You know what I mean?
Right.
Like, if we back it up that way, when do you want to talk about it?
Oh, I was thinking we would talk about it in like, February, we would do it in like, January and talk about it in February.
I don't know. Well, I guess, the only thing I'm thinking is if you send it out in January, because, because we meet so early in February, you might not actually get the results enough to quantify and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
You know what I mean? So you almost be talking about it in March, probably, which is fine.
Yeah. It's still not the end of the year, so.
Right, and then you got April, May.
I just don't, I don't want to go like, too long, but I also don't, I also realize it's coming into a very busy, like, season for everybody, so it doesn't make sense to do it around the holidays. What do you have thoughts, Jackie?
I definitely think that waiting until after the holidays is important. I also think that it should be a survey designed in a way that, you know, gets the parents feedback, but I also like to go a little bit further, because I kind of want to see like, this town.
I would like to see, well, I would like to see all the things. I would like to see all the stakeholders. I would like to see the town. I would like to see parents. I'd like to see teachers and paras and staff. I'd like to see kind of like a 360 that people do, you know, in the corporate world, when you're talking about, you know, how are we doing in general? So it's, I guess, I don't really know what the questions would be. I have to think about it more on the spot, but I really do think that we could generate something that would get all stakeholders involved. And I, you know, it also, I think if we can do it sooner than later, it also gets the town, it gives the town a voice, which is good, especially when they're going to be voting on a budget. So, yeah, I think starting the conversations would be a good thing.
So could I make the recommendation that maybe for our next meeting, maybe if we come in like, one or two questions that we think we should want to have on this survey? You know what I mean? And that way, it gives us a framework to start with.
Yeah.
You might want to shoot this year. We might want to shoot for February to get it out.
Get it out.
And then in previous next years, I think January would be absolutely the best way to go. But you figure if you got it out, you would be talking about it at least April. And that gives you April, May, and June. That's three full months to dissect it, decide, give these guys time to look into the things, blah, blah, blah. But I think eventually, I think, I don't know if it could get done in January, but this year. That's all.
Unless we're really awesome and have it all done by the next meeting.
Right around the holidays.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah.
I think it, I mean, really, in like, the first, yeah, I think we shoot for the very beginning of the year, but if it's, you know, it's, it's fine.
Cool.
I'm okay with that.
Does that sound good? Like, come in maybe with a couple of questions and give us some places to start?
I have to think, yeah. I mean, I have to think about like, what that looks like, but yeah.
And all the questions are going to all the stakeholders?
Yeah, I think so. I think we, no.
You're not going to have different questions for different stakeholders. How's that for a question?
No, I really, I really think you, yeah. I know, I think it's important to have all the same questions. That's why I was thinking about what the questions would be, I guess. You know, and I guess, yeah.
That makes sense.
Alright. Sounds good to me. Alright, any other new business?
I got some. I think you guys already know.
I was told briefly.
Yeah, I told Chris to tell you guys ahead of time, so.
What?
I have to tend to my resignation after this, for after this meeting.
Oh, crap.
So the reason being, it's got nothing to do with anything going on. It has nothing to do with the board at all. I got a head coaching job for varsity girls' basketball over at Noble, and I know my practice times are pretty inflexible. And the bottom line would be, although I could probably figure out a way to make these meetings work, I could never make a, but I could, I couldn't make any other meetings. And in fairness, you need somebody in this position that can fully devote to all the things, the joint boards and, you know, policy and all that kind of stuff. So I know Chris can explain how the plan works out as to how you guys will replace me for December. The one thing I would suggest, and I don't have anybody in mind when I say this, but there are people in the community that do have a background at doing this. And so at least to get you through the budget season for people who have been part of it, whether it's on the Budget Committee or whether it's former members of the school board, for four months would make sense, as opposed to a newbie who has no clue as to how that process plays out. You know what I mean? It's a lot to ask, you know, so.
Come on, we were just getting our groove, man.
I know, no, and I, and like I said, I have nothing negative to say. I thoroughly enjoyed it. This was my sixth in last year anyways. This was my sixth in last year anyways. But I really thought, I used to be able to coach when I was at Wintecunet, and I could make the meetings work. And I can't. Like, you guys, we'd have to meet at like 7:30 at night even to pull it off. And it's just, it's way too big of an ask. And then I'd miss everything else anyway, so it doesn't make any sense in my world. And I don't think it makes any sense.
Don't worry, if he'd been there to vote, it still would have been an external, an internal search.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
His vote didn't help.
That wasn't changing, so. But I do thank you guys, and I have enjoyed it. I really have. It's just, I got a good opportunity and I really enjoy coaching, and that's one of my passions.
Sweet, you want to come do biddy?
So, no. I got my own biddies to worry about.
All right.
It's bigger.
Chris, you want to go over the process?
Yeah, so after tonight's meeting, we'll put out, anybody that is interested in taking on the role of the third board member would write a letter of interest and they could submit it to me. We'd have an opening and closing date, and then I would pass that off to Jenny and to Jackie to read over. And then we'd contact who you'd want to bring in to interview. You'd interview them before our meeting and then make a decision at the meeting who you'd want. We'd swear them in for our December meeting, so we'd jump on it pretty quickly.
So the interviews would be before November?
Yep, we could even do it before. We could start at 5:00, you know, do an interview of them before our actual board meeting. We'd obviously post it that way, do it non-public, and then, just because of the reputation of any individuals. And then you make a selection in public, and we'd swear them in that meeting, and then they would fill out the remainder of Tom's term, which is till March. And then at March, that position would be up. So if they enjoyed it, they would have to put themselves on the ballot for, to be considered by the council.
So if anyone is interested, email Chris. All right. I'm going to make a motion that we move into non-public under 91A32C.
I'll second.
At 7:15.
7:15, thank you.
Aye.
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 Thank you.